All right, oh you gotta get me, all right, get me framed.
Try to get us good started this time, will you?
Right, good evening and welcome to the February 8th regular meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. Our first agenda item as always is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to move now that we adjourn to executive session, but I'll need a so moved in a second on the following resolution. For all the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns through executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no nays? I'll be back momentarily.
Do we need to hand it to you in a place?
No, I don't think so. Come on. Can we re-convene the February 8th, 2017 meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education?
So moved.
No move, give me a second, anybody please?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no nays? Laura? Superintendent's report, are we doing budget first?
We're doing budget first.
Budget first. Go ahead.
She keep that home.
Sue has an update on a preliminary budget that she presented to us at our last meeting.
Welcome to budget season once again.
All right.
Here we go. We have not met with the budget workshop yet, so the last time we spoke about budget was in January, so basically what I'm going to be showing you tonight is just some little tweaks with real numbers that I'm finally getting in. And we'll still be tweaking the budget, so Laura and I were talking that we wanted to just have at least a discussion with the board and probably budget workshop although, which will be next week, by the way, on Wednesday night at seven o'clock, of where we could possibly reduce costs in this current budget. Right now I have four current eighth graders in the budget, either going to Hal Dean or O'Neil. I just spoke with Mike earlier today. He normally gives me the update of where our eighth graders may choose to go, and we still don't know. They have until March 1st. But if we have, you know, a certain amount of students that are confirmed to go to private school, we could probably take them out of the budget and depending on how many students that is, that cost savings could be from sixty-six thousand to one hundred and twelve thousand. According to what we're thinking, we go to private school at this point. Another conversation that we've been having, last year, if you recall Laura, and if you want to chime in at any time, by all means, last year we hired a transportation audit, and we found that one of our runs actually could be consolidated into two of our other runs. And Dick has looked into this and he said it's quite feasible, that we could possibly get rid of one of our runs and consolidate it. And the extra ride time for students would only be maybe seven to eight minutes, according to Dick. And so I don't know if that's any questions you want to ask, maybe Laura can elude that a little bit?
When we talked about when this first subject of the consolidated bus run came up, I think seven to eight minute incremental ride time was mentioned. Question was, it's probably palatable if the ride for these affected children goes from five to twelve minutes? But if these are kids who are already on the bus for forty-five minutes and it goes to fifty-two minutes? Or something bigger, then it's a different issue. Do we have any more insight into who's affected how, other than the gross number of seven to twelve minutes?
I mean, we can bring that next time that we can have a conversation.
It may be that we have to do it in any case, it's just a question of, as I say, the palatability of that change. It's something we need to provide more.
Yeah, I think that we can get more information, it would have to be coming from Dick. I know he was looking into it. I asked him earlier tonight if he had any more solid numbers and he said no, not at this point. But probably for the budget workshop next week, we can have those numbers and be able to at least discuss it. But I know it's something that people probably don't realize, that one bus run here costs us around between sixty and seventy, sixty-five and seventy thousand dollars.
If you take it to the budget workshop, you better be prepared to say which bus and what runs get consolidated now, that's all.
And that's some of the things that we thought about, where we could actually see some money, big significant amounts coming out of this current budget that I'm going to show you now. Because right now, the numbers have changed slightly, but you're probably not going to notice, and we still have an overall budget at ten point six, almost seventy million dollars, which is a three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollar increase over last year. Okay, our biggest increases are within instruction and debt, not debt, our benefits. Basically, this current budget that's being proposed at this time shows a full-time reading teacher and an extra aide, which that aide is actually working right now, and anticipating that that position will be needed next year. And the associated benefits that go along with those two positions, as well as our health insurance has gone up eight percent on the premiums and what they discussed last time. We're actually having more of our employees choose to go onto our health plan, so.
Is the eight percent in with benefits?
In the debt and benefit generally. So where is, we have to have a balanced budget, so where is all this money coming from? Last time I had the appropriated fund balance reserves up over nine-hundred thousand, that number's come down a little bit when I did tweak number with real numbers that are coming in. Our state aid, those are, that's the proposal at eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand three thirteen. So our estimated revenue coming in outside of tax levy, we've done million eight-hundred-eleven thousand one thirty-five. So at this point, our preliminary tax levy would be eight million eight sixty-five eight three eighty-one, which is a estimated one-point-five percent increase. And we just wanted to, again, discuss how our reserves have kept us stable, and this is a lot of numbers up there, and they're kind of small, but basically I wanted to just show where our fund balance has been over the last few years and probably just look at the bottom number down there. Where in 2012, we were at three-point-two million. We were able to increase our reserves in 2000, reserves and fund balance by one-hundred-and-ten in 2013, but to three-point-three million. And then you see a trend of the reserves going down a little bit. In 2014, we ended with three-point-two million, and then the next year was three-point-one million. And our current balance in reserves at this point is three-point-five million. There were, there was an increase last year. So we've talked about using the reserves, and we're planning on using reserves this year. Probably not to the point where if we underspend a little bit on our budget next year, we probably won't be dipping in all that much, but we will be going into our reserves, so that's something that the board needs to be aware of and fund.
Your preliminary budget's drawing down appropriated fund balances and reserves.
Yes.
Of eight-hundred thousand and change, right?
Yes, if we spend every single penny that we're anticipating in our budget.
Out of a three-point-five million dollar budget? But I figured out three about total, right? So a three-point-five million?
Ten point six, yeah.
That's a six.
Oh, out of our reserve?
Yeah, out of the total reserves.
There, yeah.
So you're going to take down eight-hundred thousand.
Yes.
Is, I don't remember if my percentages is wrong in my head, better than twenty percent?
Yes.
We've never drawn down reserves.
No, and.
And there's no hope of refunding at the levels to get us back to the point of, to get us anywhere close to whole?
And so, and that's why we're looking at possibly cutting some expenses out of the budget, because if you cut the expenses, I mean, you cut what we plan to take out of reserves and fund balance. The other option, I know that David is talking about, is to go for an override. The thing is, we do have reserves and fund balance at this point.
And we have managed to increase them in two of the last four years, right? If you look at the balance, we've increased our fund balance.
I anticipate in this current year, they will be going down, how we, about three, between three and four hundred thousand. And so for next year, well, we would probably be looking at, our reserves, somewhere in the maybe five-hundred thousand dollar range. Because if we're not spending more expenses, we're not going to be using all of that eight-hundred.
Right. But you would, so I know this calls for a guess, an educated guess or an estimate, but you would expect that the end of 2017, the middle of seventeen, when we actually get the refund, our fund balance would be somewhere around three million dollars?
I probably would say it would be at three-point-one, around three-point-one. I think we'll go back down to where we were.
Four-hundred thousand dollar net change.
That's my best estimate at this point.
Other than?
So we would be where we were in 2015, so.
Managing down or managing to actual numbers on the private school tuitions is really a two-way sword, isn't it? Because that takes a lot of your flexibility out of, takes a lot of the flexibility you would have over the course of the year if you were, if you were budgeted for a full class and were only paying for whatever you had or something like that.
We usually, before we finalize the budget, we usually do adjust those numbers to, I mean, if we definitely have, say, three students that are definitely going to private school, we would take them out of the budget. I mean.
So you'll know on March 1st, which is before we put the budget up, but still there's a chance that somebody who says in March 1st they're going to private school, circumstances may change and they may be back. Some may be paying to.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
We usually leave a question of one or two students, but not mean students.
I was going to ask if you still do that, yeah, no, 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 I was going to ask, because I know it'd always be that question of one or two.
Yeah, because it's, every year you do have students that are in private school that come back into public school and, and vice versa, or students that actually move in and are high school level, and they have to choose one of our high schools in tuition. So we, you know, we have to leave some sort of issue in there for that.
So other than the consolidation of a bus run and the managing to actuals on private school tuitions, public school tuition funding, what else have we, what else have we done or looked at by way of expense management on this side?
I think we're down to programs and people. That's what you'd have to look at at this point. We've, you know, we've been cutting and trimming for years now, since, you know, so I think what you'd have to look at, if you go beyond that, is really programs and people. And so, you know, maybe the question would be at, you know, a budget workshop, we have a full-time reading teacher in there? Is that something that we want so badly, or did we make it a part-time position, or how does that look in the schedule? I don't know. But it, and that's just one example, I mean, it's not just, I'm just putting that out there, but yes, I think at this point, beyond those two other things, you're looking at programs and people.
Then I think, and I think the next time we have this conversation, both ought to be able to describe what that actually means, because I think that's the, at least we need to know what those options are. It's not enough just to say programs and people at this point, not for our, not for the next generation. So that we can, so that if we had to, we would have a better sense of the justification for drawing down our reserves by eight-hundred thousand dollars or more, well, almost, approaching nine-hundred thousand dollars. That is it, that is.
It's huge, let's see.
It's huge, it's unsustainable. It is.
It's crazy.
Unless it's something more, any other conversations about programs and people? Do you want to wait for, to come back with some more, you know, some more definite ideas along those lines?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sue? No, I've not.
Just to wrap up.
Oh, yeah. Right, 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 the budget workshop.
Just so you know, the dates of our next workshop, or our first workshop is on February 15th, which is next Wednesday. And then we have something here on March 7th in the morning with PTA. And a Saturday workshop on March 18th, and the other ones are at four, the board adoption is April 5th, and the public hearing is May 3rd, here at the board meeting, and the budget vote is May 16th. So stay tuned.
Maybe people will come to the workshops with ideas.
Yes, that would be new, I mean, nice. Let me ask you, Sue, and Laura could do, if we were to go for an override, a one-time, that basically resets for future years our base, doesn't it? If you went for an override in this year, on a one-time basis to meet the extraordinary circumstances associated with healthcare costs and so forth, you've got a new base then off which to operate and to which, within which to manage your tax levy cap in the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Yes.
Right? It's not that you're, okay, we don't set ourselves up to have to continuously go back and look for override. So is there, there is at least in theory the possibility you could ask for a one-time. I have no insight at all or I didn't, how that might work, but at least it doesn't, at least it resets the base.
Couldn't do it for this year, though.
Why, I'm sorry?
Isn't there a timeframe, you know, all this has to be done? If you want to go for an override, we couldn't, I thought we have certain timeframes, no?
The budget hasn't been adopted yet.
No, I'm not going to.
This, maybe this is a red herring, but what's our history with foundation grants? I mean, are we, is this something, do we have a history of a significant amount of money coming in through foundation grants?
Are you talking about, it's like Teta Wein grants from the state?
I'm talking about from private fund, I mean.
Well, you, you have other sources of revenue in that budget line there, and you can take a look at what that is as a percentage of the total, I think it's less than one percent.
Well, what we're presenting to you is strictly general fund. We do have grants coming in, the federal grants, and they're not portrayed in the general fund. They're in a different fund. And we're, I'm, you know, at one point we were getting about a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year in the federal grants, and I think we're down to like ninety-seven thousand, right, a year or less?
At one point, at, at a hundred-and-fifty, it's one-point-five percent, but nine-to-a-seven is less than one percent.
Yeah, and that's not part of this budget. I mean, what those federal grants are tied into are paying certain people here that do certain jobs, and some of the money has to go to St. David's.
You were talking about new sources of revenue.
What I was talking about is whether or not it's worth looking into the possibility of an aggressive attempt to find sources of revenue that we are not growing, that, you know, it's, you know, something to look into.
And I think she's talking about, like, Laura, we didn't create a team?
I thought we were going to do something like that.
We took that grant later.
I mean, I think that, because I think that if we were going to go to an override, I think that we'd want to be able to say that we're aggressively looking in a lot of different directions for help. And there are private, public schools that do get substantial grants, private foundations. Anyway, I'm willing to work on, I'm looking into that, in a certain direction.
I think James was too.
Yeah.
It is, it's worth exploring, and especially if you want to, if you and James wanted to look at that, and we may be surprised. But the one thing you got to recognize is that we are a high wealth district, and applying to any foundation or not-for-profit as a high wealth district makes it doubly challenging.
I think it came up that if we had something to put it for, would be more of a possibility.
Well, that's, sure, that's, yes, right, the more concrete you propose.
Instead of just give me money.
If that worked, why not?
Give us money, please. We want to build a tennis court.
Laura, you got your.
Yes, there, I have a lot to say.
No, you.
Good evening, Garrison.
But everybody has a snow day tomorrow.
Yes, first announcement, no day tomorrow, no school, don't show up, the buses are going to pick you up. See you on Friday. Just a couple of shout-outs, a nice shout-out to Chris Caliando and his seventh grade historians. They participated in the Putnam History Museum Jean Shonder's History Contest. It was a lovely event at the Desmond Fish Library. It was a nice partnership with Hal Dean and the Garrison students. An extra round of applause to Daniel Carlos and Chase Mayer, who received honorable mention, and Evan Masek, who earned second place. It was just a really nice way to celebrate community, local history, and student work. Also, another shout-out to our first speaker at the PTA Speaker Series here and now, our very own David Gelber. He's an executive producer in Presenting Years of Living Dangerously. It was a nice turnout, it included staff, parents, our students, some community members, and we had environmental scientists there as well. It was really a discussion directed towards children, but we couldn't help but talk about it as well, because it's about climate change, and it's an urgent and important conversation that we should all be having now so that we can preserve our beautiful earth in the future. So I also, I want to encourage you to watch Years of Living Dangerously and also come out to other speaker series. The next person who's coming is Mike Rauch, if I'm saying that correctly. He's from the Community Choice Aggregation, and that's on Friday, February 17th. And then on Friday, March 24th, we have John Cronin, and he's the co-founder of Riverkeeper. So these are great conversations that we're having with kids as well as the community, and everybody is welcome to join in, in the conversation, so I hope to see you there. Just reminders for the board, on February 28th, and the community as well, we are having our board meeting at Hal Dean. We will have a tour and we will join in their joint board meeting. And usually they have student presenters, and they tell us what our kids are up to and all the many good things that they're doing there. And I want to applaud, we went to O'Neil, and we saw our students in action, and they are just doing great things. So I'm imagining that we're going to hear more great things about our kids. And I want to say thank you to the staff here and the community here, because you really provided the foundation that they needed to be strong leaders in high school and tomorrow, so we're all part of the story. Highland Falls, they're having their next board meeting on February 16th, and they're welcoming any board member to attend, if you'd like to go.
I'll take that one, because I, I couldn't, I was scheduled for the last one, I couldn't attend. So I called Frank's office, gave him a heads up, but I'll, I'll take that from February 18.
February 16th, I'll sit here in my room.
If you would, I'd be, I get a relatively short notice.
Just an update on the Drug Awareness Roundtable, it's on March 28th, it's seven o'clock. It's a special board meeting that we're having. Right now we have members confirm, Mike Williams, our very own guidance counselor. Mike Selleck, he's going to facilitate the conversation, and he's from Bosse, he's the regional safety coordinator. We have David Gerber, not to be confused with David Gelber, from St. Christopher's Inn. Mike Piazza, Mental Health Commissioner, and Paul Piazza, Hal Dean's Resource Officer, School Resource Officer.
Is that meant to be the Piazza person? Is that meant to be the representative of law enforcement?
Yes. No, Paul Piazza.
And who's Paul Piazza?
He's Hal Dean's School Resource Officer.
That's what I'm asking, is Paul Piazza, the Hal Dean School Resource Officer, meant to be the representative of law enforcement?
Correct. Are you looking for somebody else?
I'm looking for somebody with, with all due respect to Mr. Piazza, some stature. The sheriff comes to mind, the district attorney comes to mind, assistant district attorney, the deputy sheriff of patrol, some stature.
Under sheriff, I believe, is somebody local, so that Laura and I could talk about.
Like I said.
Okay.
With all, with all due respect.
Of course. And then we're, we're in contact with David Gerber from St. Christopher's Inn, because we have not really spoken with him, and he's an important part of the community, so Mike, Mike and myself are trying to set up a time to visit the facilities and also meet David Gerber before he comes here and talks with us in the rounds. Well, have you, I mean, only because I'm thinking of St. Christopher's, which is pretty much male-based, had, has anybody reached out to Beth Breko, which is Walter Holman? So that this way you have the balance with the two. Okay, thank you.
We're going to cover both. There's another man, aspects of equipment.
Oh, Schnep, she's, oh, well, I'd reach. I'll reach out to her.
Reach out, I mean, you know, just, we'll see, I mean, I, I don't know, I should let some people know.
Okay. And lastly, as Superintendent Sheboy said when he visited us last board meeting, that they are, the two are having a workshop around the heroin problem in the community. So that is on February 15th at seven o'clock, and it's called Medicine Cabinet to Heroin Addict: A Brief and Deadly Journey. So it's, everybody's, everybody's feeling it, everybody's worried about it and trying to figure out how we as a community can support, fight, and save lives. They have this, arrive early to walk through a teenage bedroom. Would you know what it would look like if you suspected your teen of using drugs or alcohol? So I guess they have a bedroom set up, and they would see the unsuspected, right? That's all I have to.
Questions for Laura? John?
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to, first of all, start off, you might have noticed as you're coming to the meeting tonight, we are set up for a book fair. That is because we are in the middle of celebrating Dear Week. This is a week that used to be called Parped Week, Parents as Reading Partners, but in search of a more fluid poetic acronym, we went with Dear, which is Drop Everything and Read Week. And as you can imagine, part of what we have been doing this time is finding time to drop everything and read during the school day. I'm sure a lot of students are very, very happy that part of this week will be tomorrow, which will be an extended time for them to drop everything and read. We also have had parents come in to be guest readers and to read with students. We, as I said, have the book fair that has been part of the way we've been celebrating. This week we have number, numerous selections by a children's author named Sarah Penny Packer. We were really delighted to have Sarah come and visit our school today and present three assemblies. Each grade level appropriate, it's so wonderful to find an author who actually writes for the primary, intermediate, and middle school level, which she does. So she was able to really tailor and inspire our young writers in many, many different ways today. One of the things we're going to feature as part of Dear Week was a six, two original short plays by the sixth grade, but that was going to be tomorrow night, and it is now stowed out, but stay tuned, we will reschedule it. And the week will culminate in a Read-A-Thon sleepover, which is for third through fifth graders, Friday night, where there will be a Read-A-Thon, and it will go into the evening hours, and they will be sleeping over in the gym and waking up very, very well-rested, I'm sure, on Saturday morning. Speaking of writing and inspiring writing, I also want to just circle back around to something that Laura and I mentioned at the last board meeting. As you know, we have been, one of the chief initiatives of this year is implementing the Lucy Cawkins Units of Study in Writing this year. And the first half of the year, we experienced some frustration at being wait-listed for professional development with Teachers College. Sometimes things happen for a reason, because even though we were frustrated during that wait, it forced us to keep an open mind and ears for other chances of professional learning. And last time we were together, we mentioned that we found a small consultancy group called Word, Words of Advice. It's basically a two-person operation, they are steeped deep in the literacy practice of teachers college, and they have spent three visitation days with us. Kate is our K-two person, and Melanie has been working with us three, five, and six, eight. They're, they're, they're wonderful, and I just want to let you know, they're wonderful because they're steeped deep in the philosophy. We are implementing the units of study written by one of the chief scholars in the field, Lucy Cawkins. What's very refreshing about the approaches of these consultants is even though they're steeped basically, deeply in the work of Lucy Cawkins, they also bring a round experience and a lot of the other real chief thinkers around this pedagogy. So in other words, it brings to, to the table different flavors of the Kool-Aid. And gives, in that gives teachers some autonomy, some fresh ways to rethink and look at the units of study, which are very, very heavy with words, and gives them some, I think, freedom in how to implement and brings a new approach to the work. A lot of the work that they spend in the course of the day is with the consultant and their colleagues to really take a look at different cornerstones of what goes into the teaching of a writing lesson and how to decipher a unit and its component lessons. But then a great thing is that every single day, part of it is watching these consultants in a classroom, watching them teach. As they're teaching the different parts of a writing lesson, they're stopping, they're dialoguing with the teacher, saying, "Do you see what I'm doing here?", and talking, and it just is such a wonderful thing to watch and to experience and really feel. and really feel that this is a moment to really jumpstart the teaching practices of writing. And we are looking forward to it continuing through the rest of the year. So we're off to a good start and I wanna let you all know that. And that's it.
Questions for John?
Are you gonna extend the book sale for an extra day to compensate for that?
I would be happy to. You know, it's really something that's run through the PTA. And if they came and said we wanted to really make up the lost time, I'd be very, very happy to. Absolutely.
John, since we've done it last minute, I think I saw that, no, actually, I wanna express appreciation for the job you've done in facilitating the creation of a new Cub Scout pack here at school.
Yes.
The reinvigoration of a pack that had sort of gone by the wayside. You've had tremendous attendance, I understand, or participation?
It's definitely a side passion of mine. I'm very, very active with scouting in this part of our council, the Manitoba District. And I was working with the Phillips Town Pack to do some recruiting. And as we were recruiting with the Phillips Town Pack, they sort of had their limits of growth because of their parent volunteers. And I saw that there was a lot of boys that I think might have been interested that didn't have the opportunity. And so, yeah, we worked with the PTA to become our chartered organization. And twenty-seven boys are currently registered, which is a very, very impressive number for a school our size because we only did K to four. And to have twenty-seven in a fledgling pack is something that's really, really impressed some people that work within.
You anticipate this, as these kids age up, will this evolve into boy scouting for them? Is that a hope?
You always hope, you always hope. The Cub Scouting Program goes to the fifth grade around this time of the year. They have searched for a troop to bridge into, to become a Boy Scout. There is, of course, the Phillips Town Troop that I know. We have a great Eagle Scout project, two, one last year and one this year. Both the Waldron Brothers that are working and giving back to the school. That's a great troop. And if there was ever a need to expand as we really became a feeder organization, we could also consider a troop in the future as well.
I think it's fantastic. I'll steal some time for my board member comment, but just to say, in light of the conversation we had earlier about our drug use awareness and the challenges we all face as a community, the fact that we've got this program up and running and it's started with so much promise, I think is very encouraging in that context, too. I don't know that it exists, but I would be very curious to know whether the Boy Scouts of America, national organization level, has done any research at all to look at challenges of substance abuse in a, you know, the sort of, among young men who have had the Boy Scout experience as compared to the overall, a similar cohort who haven't. I'm guessing it's an encouraging number. And, but I have no idea. But it'd be worth.
I have, I will look into that and I will report back to you on that question. I think it's a great question. I know anecdotally, because I have been a Cub Master and Assistant Scout Master with older boys, that it is a program that offers boys opportunities that I think are very needed in our society and are not readily available in other places in our society. So, and I would think you would see a correlation.
Well, kudos, John. Thank you. Now I've stolen from my time. I won't have any more, so.
Did I say, did they build something?
One of the Eagle Scouts is doing a service project out of the garden.
Was it a stage or something?
Building a stage, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I thought there was more than one in that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
Sue, we've got warrant reports, copies of which are in your package. Any?
I mean, it's all business as usual. Any questions, please, please ask.
Does any noteworthy data shoot?
No, we got our first bill from the Highland Falls. You can see that, Warrant Number Nineteen, so that paying September, October, November. So if anybody's interested in that. But other than that, it's all the same normal bills.
If you have any questions for Sue, I'm gonna move to the consent agenda. There are six items. Resolve the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the Consent Agenda Items Eight. That's B through G is presented. First is to accept the minutes of the January eighteen and nineteen, two thousand seventeen, board meetings. Those are in your package. Item two or C is accept the CSE recommendations, also in your package. Item D is approve the extension of the appointment of Brittany Slinsky to the position of long-term substitute teacher until such time as notice of termination of the appointment is provided but no later than June twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, according to the terms of policy number six two two one. Item E is approve the childcare leave for elementary school teacher Amy Cuchera, effective on or about May thirty-one, two thousand seventeen through June twenty-three, two thousand seventeen. Item F is appoint the boys' lacrosse coach. That's appointment of Gary Van Asselt to the position of boys' lacrosse coach for the spring two thousand sixteen, seventeen, in a stipend of three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. And item last is approve the sports merger for modified wrestling with Putnam Valley School District for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second. Give me a second. Laura, just wanna tell us in a paragraph about the personnel changes that we just reviewed.
Yes. First of all, I wanna say congratulations to Brittany Slinsky, who will be remaining with us in kindergarten. She was filling a maternity leave and now will be continuing with us. Stacy's gonna come back from maternity leave and move into grade one. So Stacy will, so Brittany will stay in kindergarten. And then another congratulations to our dear Amy Cuchera, who's going on maternity leave.
And there are no questions?
I just, it's nice to see Gary's coming here to coach. I've known him for years and he's been coaching at the Halvein. That's nice.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, no names. We have only one, well, yeah, one discussion item. And that is review of the committee minutes. That's the Finance and Audit Committee. Since I was there, I'll tell you what it says. It says exactly what you just saw in the budget presentation, Sue. Actually, it's one iteration earlier substantively. All of the information you heard here was reviewed with the Finance Committee at that meeting. We've got three action items. One is to resolve, the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the revision to the two thousand sixteen, seventeen Board of Education meeting calendar to add a special meeting on March twenty-eighth at seven PM. That's the Drug Awareness and Community Outreach Program that we've just been discussing.
So moved.
Give me a second. So, all those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no names. Excellent. Oh, we're getting rid of the lawnmower. Resolve that the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District authorizes the disposal of a lawnmower in accordance with Board Policy Fifty-two Fifty.
So moved.
Lawnmower disposal policy. So moved.
I moved it.
Anybody?
They did this at all.
What kind of lawnmower is it? All those in favor? Aye. All right, and a cooperative bidding agreement. Resolve the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adopts the attached resolution to participate with other school districts of the Southern Westchester Bosse's in the bidding of listed, in the bidding of the listed supplies, commodities, materials, and equipment. Yeah, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Give me a second, I'll tell you what, you tell us what this is. We do it every year.
We do it every year.
It's through Southern Westchester Bosse's and it's just saying that we have opportunity to use their services if we choose to do so, to save some money. So it might be art supplies, office supplies, cafeteria food supplies, lumber supplies.
Anything where we get scale purchasing power. Excellent. All those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no names. Excellent. Everybody saw that it's gonna be snowing tonight, so we only have a few members of the public and they are welcome to make comments should they so desire. They demure. Board member comment? Anybody?
Well, I would hope that we do a good job in publicizing Mike Rousch's talk about CCAs because it's a really big deal. It's one of the things that can be done.
Oh, right.
People don't know what CCAs are, but they're, it's a very awkward title for something very smart and very good. They're Community Choice Aggregations is what it stands for. And it means that communities can get together and pool their purchasing power when it comes to electricity and can, this is enabled by New York State law, so that they can go to the central Hudson and require them to make renewable energy their default choice. People, individuals can opt out of it if they choose. But it's one of these exciting things that can be scaled broadly that really has an impact on the use of fossil fuel energy. And this, it already exists in Westchester. There are twenty towns in Westchester that have a CCA. And some folks here are trying to put one together, Jason Angel, who maybe you know, I was just sort of reading it. But it's really worth, I mean, this is something that if kids wanna know what can be done at the local level around this issue, this will be a very important event to attend. And Mike is a very eloquent guy in this subject.
When's he doing it? Date, sorry?
It's coming up soon.
I know, Laura, I have my remarks, I'm sorry.
February seventeenth, Friday.
Yeah, it sounded, it sounded an interesting concept, that question. And if it leads to economies, a little more reason to be familiar with it. Anybody else?
No, is it Halvein this night? They're looking forward to our joint meeting together.
That's right. If there's nothing else, there's no snow flying yet. Well, I'm very happy with that. I have a motion that we resolve the Board of Education, the regular meeting of the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District be adjourned.
So moved.
So soon?
So soon. Second. All those in favor? Aye. We were counting on a lot of public comment.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great day.